The meeting is now called to order. Will Mr. Crossfeld please call the roll?
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Gwass.
Here.
Mrs. Herrick.
Here.
Mr. Hung.
Here.
Mrs. Lacks.
Here.
If we have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices located at 760 Route 18, East Brunswick, New Jersey. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, everyone. This is the reorganization meeting of the Board of Education. This is the meeting where newly-elected Board members will be sworn into office, and then the officers will be selected, and then there are other items on the agenda that are part of reorganization, and then subsequently we'll continue with regular business of the Board. The first item on the agenda is the appointment of temporary chairperson. May I have such a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Mrs. Herrick.
Second.
And second by Ms. Gwass. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next order of business is the administering of the oaths of office. So we will do that front and center. The first individual to be sworn in is Anna Braun. And if you have any family members that would like to join you up here, you're more than Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Anna Braun, do solemnly affirm.
I, Anna Braun, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly affirm.
And I do solemnly affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Very good, thank you.
You may take your seat. All right. Jamie Falco.
Do you have any room? Do you like that?
Yes. Come on, guys. See? Really? I can just tell.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Jamie Falco, do solemnly swear.
I, Jamie Falco, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Don't forget family pictures, this is great.
She's at practice, uh, game tonight.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Louis Figueroa, do solemnly swear.
I, Louis Figueroa, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You're all ready with your right hand up. Please repeat after me. I, Wilbur Pan, do solemnly swear.
I, Wilbur Pan, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in these United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now on to the nominations for Board President. So that everyone is aware of procedure, the temporary chair will accept nominations for Board President from Board members in attendance. Every member has a right to make a nomination. Thus, a second is not required pursuant to the Board's own bylaws. Upon closing the acceptance of nominations, we will proceed to the vote. The vote is done by ballot. We will distribute a paper ballot for each Board member to indicate who they are voting for or if they are abstaining from the vote. You will then sign and print your name on the ballot. For, we have one Board member that is not present physically, they are here via teleconference, and so when it's time to take the vote, after I have collected all the ballots, the Board member who is not present will provide a voice vote on who they are voting for, and then the ballots will be read. So then there is no influence one way or another regarding what the outcome is. So, having said that, may I have nominations from the floor?
I have a nomination.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes. It has been my honor to serve as President of this Board, and I am incredibly proud of the work we've done together to serve the best interests of our students, staff, and families. I've had the privilege of working alongside an extraordinary individual, someone who's demonstrated unwavering dedication, leadership, and a deep commitment to our district. Heather has brought her vision, clarity, and collaborative style to this Board. She champions diverse perspectives, and most importantly, she puts our students' physical and mental well-being at the forefront of every action. As Vice President, Heather has demonstrated not only exceptional leadership skills, but also a remarkable ability to listen, learn, and grow. She's actively worked to ensure that our goals align with the needs of our students in the ever-changing world of education. Heather has shown a deep understanding of what it takes to lead with integrity, vision, and heart. I know that under her leadership, we will continue to build upon the solid foundation we've laid and tackle the challenges ahead with the same level of passion, dedication, and collaboration. I am proud to nominate Heather Gwass for President of the Board of Education. I'm confident that her leadership will guide us through the welcoming of our new Board members, our navigating the year ahead, and ensuring that our schools are made a place of opportunity, growth, and excellence for every student and staff member.
Thank you, Mrs. Lacks. Any other nominations from the floor?
Yes, I would like to, uh, good evening, first of all, to everyone, and I hope everyone had a good New Year. I would like to nominate Tim Cummings for President of the Board of Education. Tim is a seasoned leader who is committed to empowering individuals and fostering healthy and resilient communities. His strong calling to service is evidenced by his commitment to the Board of Education, the work he's done in East Brunswick Human Relations Council, and also abroad. Tim has managed the construction of a new school, and he's been instrumental in providing counseling and tutoring services to children in need, skills that we need now. On a personal level, Tim is a father, a husband, a community member who cares deeply about this community and what we need, and he is about creating positive change in our community, which is something that we need now. Tim has also worked and to build teams and has worked to put people together focused on moving forward as a group. That is what Tim is all about, and I am very, very proud to say that he is someone that I am nominating and have every confidence in.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, the nominations for Board President are closed. We will proceed to the balloting. After you've completed your ballot, please fold it in half so it cannot be read, and We have eight paper ballots. Mrs. Lacks, how do you vote?
I vote for Heather Gwass.
A vote for Tim Cummings by Tim Cummings. A vote for Heather Gwass by Lori Herrick. A vote for Tim Cummings by Anna Braun. A vote for Heather Gwass by Lee Wu-Hong. A vote for Heather Gwass by Jamie Falco. A vote for Tim Cummings by Lou Figueroa. A vote for Heather Gwass by Wilbur Pan. A vote for Heather Gwass by Heather Gwass. Ms. Gwass is the duly-elected Board President, congratulations. We will proceed with the balloting for Vice President, and the procedures are the same. And so, without further delay, are there any nominations for Vice President?
I have a nomination.
Mr. Cummings.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, and welcome to the new Board members. I would like to nominate Lou Figueroa for the role of Vice President. Over the past year and a half, I've had the opportunity to get to know Lou primarily in this space and at various town-wide activities and groups, including our involvement in the EBHRC, the Human Relations Council. There are three things that really stand out to me about Lou. First is, and this takes precedent over all the others, his commitment to his family. Without a doubt, on every conversation that I have with Lou, something comes up about his family, whether it be his immediate family or extended, and the care that he's providing for them, or, you know, the work that they're doing together to do something for someone else. His commitment to the community and his commitment to the district also stand out as incredibly valuable components of who he is as a person. And I want to just touch on those real quickly. I think we can all agree that there's a lot going on in this town and a lot to be taken into consideration. To name a few, we have four new members, dynamic new members of our group. We have a bustling town that continues to grow and develop, and then we have our own general evolution of who we are and how we interact with one another, how we use technology to grow and learn. There's a lot of advancement occurring, and I believe that Lou is very well poised to help lead us through all of the work that's going to be required to meet those needs and overcome them. I think that his experience in this community and his dedication to the community are beyond significant, and I think that his 13 years as a member of this district give him a unique lens into the many needs and opportunities that are ahead. So I want to close by saying that, sorry, Lou, I'm not really looking at you too much right now. I should turn. I've had a lot of conversations with Lou about, and I want to really be sure that this is heard, the amazing things that are going on in this district. As parents of young children here, we have both discussed and highlighted how grateful we are to be a part of East Brunswick and the great care that we feel our kids are receiving here in this community. We celebrate that and honor that. In those conversations, we also recognize that there is room for improvement and that we have a lot to do to get things done that will even help us be in a better place. Lou is a man of tremendous compassion who thrives on seeing others succeed, and I think that he is the right person for this role.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Ms. Gwass.
I am honored to nominate Lee Wu-Hong for Vice President. Lee Wu I only know through this setting. This is where we met, but now I see him everywhere in town. He is a smart, kind, and well-respected man. And what many don't know is he is also funny. Lee Wu is a pleasure to serve with because he is self-effacing. He does not put himself in the spotlight. When I think of him, three words come to mind: honorable, committed, and steadfast. Lee Wu has served on the Board for eight years and has consistently been dedicated to our children, our staff, and our community. I know, having spent many a long meeting here, his commitment to the Board comes at a personal cost. It interferes with his profession. It takes away from his home life and his three boys, and he has gone through difficult times in education on this Board. When we meet every single week, and he has a steadfast commitment that I truly admire. Lee Wu comes with an incredibly diverse and strong background. He has two Masters of Science degrees and one Juris Doctor degree. He is a scientist and now a well-respected lawyer. His commitment to learning is visible everywhere in his own life, and he brings this forward in his love for the Curriculum Committee, which he chairs, as well as his interest in the latest technology or programs. Lee Wu always wants the best for our children. Lee Wu has been here through COVID, his own personal health issues. He doesn't miss a beat. He doesn't miss meetings, he doesn't miss committee meetings. He serves where he is committed to serve, and he does so with honor. Leadership is an obvious step for Lee Wu, as he is the Board of Education liaison to the Middlesex County School Boards Association. This is not an automatic part of our boardsmanship. He chooses to make himself a better Board member and to carry information to the Board. He is a certified Board member. Again, his commitment to education. Lee Wu told me, when I gained the needed experience on the Board, that I should work towards leadership. He leads by mentoring. He has also shared that many times he was approached to consider entering leadership, but this is the year he wishes to serve. This is his time, and I am proud to nominate Lee Wu-Hong for Vice President.
Thank you, Ms. Gwass. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I will close the nominations, and now we will proceed to the balloting. The procedures are the same as they were for Presidents. Please complete your ballots, indicate who you were voting for, or if you are abstaining, sign the ballot, print your name, fold it in half, and return it to the center of the We have eight ballots returned. Mrs. Lacks, how do you vote?
I vote for Lee Wu-Hong.
Lou Figueroa? A vote for Lou Figueroa by Tim Cummings. A vote for Lee Wu-Hong by Lori Herrick. A vote for Lou Figueroa by Anna Braun. A vote for Lee Wu-Hong by Heather Gwass. A vote for Lee Wu-Hong by Lee Wu-Hong. A vote for Lee Wu-Hong by Jamie Falco. A vote for Lee Wu-Hong by Wilbur Pan. A vote for Lou Figueroa by Lou Figueroa. Lee Wu-Hong is the duly-elected Vice President. Congratulations, Mr. Hung. So at this time, I will call for a, literally, one-minute recess. Don't get up from your seats. We will switch a couple of places so that the President and Vice President can take their appropriate places, and we will reconvene momentarily.
Good evening again. It's a different vantage point from right here. I am pleased and honored to be in this chair tonight. We are moving on in our agenda to, uh, sorry, the annual actions, which would be items nine through 15. Can I have a motion for items nine through 15?
Motion.
Ms. Herrick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pan. Is there any discussion? All right, I believe this is a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. Anna Braun?
Aye.
Tim Cummings?
Yes.
Jamie Falco?
Yes.
Louis Figueroa? Lori Herrick?
Yes.
Lee Wu-Hong?
Yes.
Lori Lacks?
Yes.
Wilbur Pan?
Yes.
And Heather Gwass?
Yes.
Motion, motions carry.
Moving on to close session. No?
No, we have training.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Board member, wait, what am I doing here?
Yep, that's, trying to be mad, yes.
Okay. We have Board Member Prohibited Acts and School Ethics Training. As required by law, all Board of Education members are required to annually receive training on prohibited acts and school ethics. This training will be conducted by Board Attorney Matthew Giacobi.
Good evening, everybody. We're passing around an outline that I have presented to you before. We update it each and every year, periodically throughout the year. This is really for your edification. I'm not going to go through it line by line because we'll be here for hours. I can summarize it for you, but importantly, what it does is it lays out the School Ethics Act, and within, which is part of 18A, and within the School Ethics Act is the Code of Conduct, which you guys just passed, number nine on the agenda. So the Code of Conduct is within the Act. So why is this important? So I've been practicing law now for 32 years, and I've been in the space of representing schools as a young associate, starting back in the mid-'90s after my clerkship, to the present. And what I can tell you is, is that for the first 25 years of my practice, I really didn't even know what the School Ethics Act was, other than it was codified in 18A. You read it, you had the training, that was it. In the last five years, and I represent a lot of insurance companies that insure school districts and municipalities, I would say that at least 50% of the cases that are assigned to us to defend are School Ethics Act violations. There's been an absolute explosion in School Ethics Act cases. Now you'd say, why would people do this? Well, they do it for all variety of reasons, literally anyone can file them. Residents can file them, Board members against other Board members, staff members against Board members, they can take all types of, anyone can file them. And is there, like, a financial penalty for a Board member? No, there's not. You can get, if you're found to have committed an ethics violation... get, if you're found to have committed an ethics violation, you can be reprimanded, censured, which is more serious than reprimand, but it's still basically, don't do it again. You could be suspended, and in some very, very rare cases, you can be removed. I can tell you that the removal cases, you could probably count them on two hands, in all of New Jersey. It rarely, rarely happens. In two instances, I'm aware of board members getting long-term suspensions. And when does that happen? It happens when board members, A, reveal confidential information, or B, they mistreat staff members. Those are the two where the School Ethics Commission has no tolerance, and they tend to be long-term suspensions. And they're reported cases, so I can tell you what happened. In one case, and I think that the bottom line is, is I like to kind of use analogies, and I've used analogies that you guys are like the owners of an NFL team, and you hire a coach, and you have the general manager, but you, you're the, you're the people that fund the whole operation. The taxpayers fund it. You guys put together the budget, and you make sure the district is all run. The one thing that's very, very unique about Board of Eds versus towns, and I could speak to you because I represent lots of towns as Labor Council, towns at their council meetings, they very, very, very rarely talk about staff. Rarely. Once in a blue moon, there'll be a discussion in closed session about staff. I represent a lot of towns where, if we go into executive session, it's like once or twice a year. Every board meeting, literally every single board meeting that you guys attend, you're in closed session. Why? Because inevitably, you're talking about students or staff. You're dealing with people's lives. And so staff members, they have a right of privacy. They have a right to be treated fairly. You don't want to tarnish them so they can't get another job if they're, if you're going to dismiss them. And students have a right to privacy. And you're dealing with very sensitive things. You're dealing with student discipline. You could be dealing with health issues, mental crises, all kinds of things. So the School Ethics Commission, which is made up of a variety of people appointed through the governor, they serve on this, and they, they enforce the Act and the Code. And what I can tell you is, in the instances where people have violated that trust, because when you go into closed session, not only is it attorney-client privileged, but you are, you are sacrosanct in protecting the privacy rights of the students and staff that you're dealing with each and every day. Because at the end of the day, what are you? You're a people business. You're not making widgets. You're not producing, you're producing students, and you're educating them so that they can become productive adults. And so inevitably, when you're dealing with that, in this people business, every meeting, you're dealing with students and staff. And some of them are, you know, tragic situations, sad situations, and it's very difficult as a board member, because sometimes you, you have to take action, and people get up and yell at you, how could you have done that to this kid, or et cetera. You can't comment on it because you are bound by the privacy laws that they're enforcing. So in one case, a board member, this is in this decision, decided, and I, I was, I still represent this board, but this is what had happened. They had a, an employee who had an alcohol problem and drove up to school one day, and came into the classroom, and it was pretty clear that the person was under the influence of alcohol. So they, and then they went into medical distress, ambulance had to be called, et cetera. So the interim superintendent of time writes a confidential email, and it said, right on it, confidential, highly confidential email, just wanted to let you know, this happened, by the way, on a Friday morning, wanted to let you know, this occurred at school, and he sent it out to the board members. In case somebody approaches you, this is highly confidential, we've taken things, the person was transported to the hospital, they're under medical observation, et cetera, et cetera. This board member took the email, and this is before, really before we had, you know, Facebook, et cetera. They took the email, and at one time, NJ.com had its own blog where people would write on it. He posted the email on the NJ.com blog, and it said, highly confidential, not to be, and it had the person's name. That case, off the board. They removed them from the board. They said, that was un, because you disclosed all kinds of stuff. The other one, and I'm going to touch on this in a second, get into the dangers of social media, is a board member, this happened more recently. The one I told you before was about fifteen years ago. This is a more recent one, is, was a board president. And the board president was of a certain political ideology. He was very opposed to unions, and he really, really, really didn't like the union president. Didn't like her. Well, guess what? If you're the union president, you're an employee of the board. At the end of the day, you're an employee. You may not like unions or whatever, but when you guys are sitting up here, you're the employer. You're not just a board member. You're the employer of well over a thousand staff members. And so what he did is, he said, well, I can use the disclaimer. And you've heard me talk about this before, that you don't give up your First Amendment right. You can, you know, go to town council meeting, and let's say you're opposed to, you know, in, a bond issuance. There's a famous case at U.S. Supreme Court dealing with the, you can do that. You have, but you have to say, I'm speaking on my own behalf, I'm not speaking as a board member. You're not authorized to speak as a board member unless the board, as a whole, authorizes you to speak. So what the School Ethics Commission has said is, if you're going to write letters to the editor, if you're going to make public statements, you have to, at first, disclaim. You have to say, this is my own belief, this is my own statement, it's not attributable to that of the board, it's my own. So this board president said, well, I'll just put that disclaimer on my blog. He had a blog. And in the blog, he put the disclaimer, these are my own beliefs, not that of the board. And then he just bashed the, the, the union president, who was, again, a district employee, bashed and bashed and bashed. What ended up happening was, he ultimately, the School Ethics Commission said, you can't, the disclaimer's not a get-out-of-free-from-jail card. You're not allowed to use the disclaimer and then bash your employee because you're still an employer. So they removed him from the board. They gave him a six-month suspension. He had actually lost the election when the six-month suspension came down. So if he ever ran again, he starts off with suspension. So in those are two instances, I tell you that because it's, it's what people, in those instances, board members, not treating the, their employees, again, you're an employer, with the level of respect and privacy that they're entitled to as employees of the district, which is the board. The one thing that I wanted to tell you guys, where most of these ethics cases, because they said in the last five years, there's been an explosion. And what I can tell you is, the explosion is all probably tied to the internet. If you look at the internet, if you look at Facebook, if you look at Snapchat, it's what people put up and say on the internet. And it used to be, when I first started practicing law, you'd have things that were, very difficult to prove things, because it was, you know, well, he said it at the water cooler. Do you have proof of it? Did you record it? Do you have, no, I don't. Well, we can't prove it. Now, people, they don't talk anymore. They just write on the internet. Even kids, if you go out to dinner with a group of kids, I've done this with my kids and your friends, and you look back for a little while at dinner, they're all on their phones, talking to each other and texting. So everyone's used to talking and texting and saying things and writing. Well, once you put it in writing, it's there for good. And so more and more board members post things that put them in harm's way. Or they post something, and you might not even be in harm's way. You might not have done anything inappropriate, but it upsets somebody, and they file an ethics case. So why, why are ethics cases problematic for boards? You're not going to lose money. You're not going to, they're not going to come to your house and levy your house. There's no, there's not attorney's fees. The problem is, is that when a school ethics complaint gets filed, the board, under the law, has to identify its board members. So you put your insurance carrier on notice. And the insurance carrier then assigns legal counsel, and you have an deductible. And your deductible generally is about $10,000. So the first $10,000 of defending a board member in a school ethics act, which will lead to a reprimand, a censure, maybe a suspension, maybe a removal, very, so let's, usually it's reprimand or censure. $10,000 of it is spent by the board, and then it goes to your insurance carrier. And if you have lots of them, guess what happens? Your insurance rates goes up. You have a lot of car accidents, your rates go up. You have a lot of ethics cases, your rates go up. So the real, the real people that are harmed are your taxpayers and your citizens, because you're spending taxpayer money, money that should be much better spent on the kids and your staff than on a lawyer defending you in an ethics case. So what we try to do is help you avoid it. And how do we help you avoid it? You have a board attorney. If you have an ethics question, you, you speak to Dr. Valeski, they will involve us, we'll give you guidance on it. We can, and we'll put it in writing for you. If they're really unique situations, and you haven't taken any action yet, we can actually write to the School Ethics Commission and ask for an advisory opinion. It takes about four weeks. So if you know something's coming up, and it's unique, and we, and there's lots of guidance, and there's lots of decisions out there, so we can give you guidance on virtually ninety-nine percent of them. One of the most unique ones happened here, in East Brunswick, and we got an advisory opinion. I'll tell you about it. You had a board member who was not only a, a board member, but she was a collegiate athlete. She was a gymnast, I believe, and, like, Division One, and she had a love for athletics, and she was an NJ SIA referee. And she never, ever officiated any East Brunswick meet. She was a part of it, and she would be assigned to, you know, scoring the perfect ten on the balance beams or whatever. Well, she came to, to me and said, through Dr. Valeski, it wasn't even Dr. Valeski, I think it was Dr. Magistro, and said, I have this situation. They've asked me to be available to be at county meets, and at state meets, what happens if there's an East Brunswick kid in that meet? Is that an ethics violation? Well, I can assure you that there's no ethics opinion on that one. So we wrote an advisory opinion, and the School Ethics Commission said, no, that's not a, that's just happenstance, the kid's there, you have a duty to referee in accordance to the NJ S guidelines, it's not an ethics violation. So we have the ability to get that for you if it's a really unique situation. And it's better, what I always say is, there's nothing that you're going to be voting on, that you're not going to have plenty of notice of. If it's really an issue, we will tell you to recuse yourself and not involve yourself. And just to talk about recusals and not involving yourself. If I say, you, I think you need to recuse yourself, recusal means you can't talk about it. You can't be involved in it. You can't give your opinion and say, well, I'm going to abstain now because I have a conflict. Because if you've involved yourself, then you have an abstain. So if you're going to abstain from something because you believe you have a conflict, or I've given you guidance, then you need to recuse yourself and not discuss it. And in some instances, if it, you know, deals financially, I may even say you'd be better off just stepping off the dais, just so that there's no appearance where anyone can ever come after you and say, you tried to influence that vote. You have to understand, the School Ethics Commission, too, just one last thing. Under the School Ethics Act, remember, I said, there's the School Ethics Act that's codified in 18A, and with any act is the Code of Conduct that you guys just talked, talked about. If the Code of Conduct, if the charges filed against a board member contains violations of the Act, not just Code of Conduct, but violations of the Act, if the School Ethics Commission finds that, yes, there was a violation, a potential violation of the Act, it goes for a hearing before an administrative law judge. Do you know who prosecutes if there's violation of the Act? Not the individual who filed them. It's the Attorney General's office. They assign a deputy attorney general to prosecute the case. So, so when I tell you that these cases can become quite expensive, they can, and they can go on for quite a long time. There's discovery, there's motions. So the best thing to do is to try to avoid getting yourself in a situation where somebody can file ethics charges against you. Again, if they do, you're indemnified. The board, by law, has to provide you a defense, and you have insurance to do that. What we're, I'm going to do, and I started doing this this year because it's become very, very complicated in terms of family members, who's related to possible NGA members, et cetera. We're going to send out a questionnaire tomorrow for each of you guys to fill out, and then we'll give you each an individual opinion as to whether or not you have conflicts and/or whether you should recuse yourself. In this handout, we've given you, and I just want to alert you to it, there's, it's on page four and page five. This is dealing with when you have to recuse yourself based on whether you, your spouse, dependent children, are members of a statewide union. That's one. And then, the School Ethics Commission, on page five, defined as, what is a familial relationship? There was no guidance on this. And so what we've done here is, we've given you, you know, whether this is considered a relative. So school officials, brothers, spouse, no. But there's ones in here that, that if you look at it, you'll, you'll say, school officials nephew, yes. School officials grandparents, yes. So you just want to be cognizant that these are all relationships that you have, that you might not have a conflict, but it might be that your spouse, or a child of yours, is a member of the NGA in another district, is a member of the, of the NGAA here, is a member of a supervisory unit. And so what we'll do is, we'll give you a written opinion to give you guidance on what you can vote on and can't vote on. Just to give you an example, there are certain districts that have conflicts because there's nepotism. There's a nepotism policy, nepotism law, and then you guys also have a policy. And what it says is that board members can't hire their family members. But what the law doesn't provide is, you could have family members that are working for the board, and then you decide to run for the board. You're allowed to do that. So you could have situations where you have a board member who gets elected by a district, by a town, and they already have family members that work for the board. Well, if they work for the board, there's all types of prohibitions about what they can vote on, what they can't vote on, who they can evaluate, who they can't evaluate. And so we'll give you that guidance, too. I don't, I don't believe any one of you, okay, well, you don't have to, but I just want you guys to understand, it's, it's, it's very, very complicated, and we want to make sure that you're, you're not putting yourselves in harm's way when you're voting on something. And again, you get the agenda ahead of time. If you have a question on it, talk to Dr. Valeski. You'll get me involved. We'll give you guidance, because our goal is to try to avoid you guys having any ethics problems and frankly, having to spend any money defending these cases, so that you guys can put those, those monies towards the students and staff. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the schedule is a little different this evening. We are moving to closed session. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the exception to the Open Public Meeting Act and permitted to be discussed in closed session pursuant to NJ S A 10A 12B, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, security and personnel, whereas the closed session is estimated to be thirty minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action will be taken. From a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Herrick, second by Mr. Pan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Absentions? All right, we're in closed. We will be back in thirty minutes. All right, good evening, and welcome back. We are starting a more familiar-looking part of the evening with Dr. Valeski and the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Gwass. Good evening, everyone. And I'm going to say it, Happy New Year, although I've been told earlier today, some people have heard that too much already. So, welcome to 2025, and congratulations to the four new board members who took their oath tonight. The annual Senior Alumni Day event took place on Friday, December 20th, at the high school in a redesigned format this year. Over sixty graduates from the class of 2024 attended various college, colleges, who attended various colleges and career paths, returned to the high school to share with this year's senior class their college experiences. School counselors Connor Cortina, Lisa Nelson, started the event in a panel discussion format. Seniors were then able to choose a breakout session according to their planned major, where they were able to engage in a question-and-answer session with our alumni. This past December, all elementary and Churchill students participated in a district-wide collection to benefit the Live Like a Unicorn organization, which was facilitated by our Student Assistance Specialist. This organization provides supports to children with pediatric cancer. One of the ways Live Like a Unicorn helps is by providing unicorn boxes. The boxes are filled with age-appropriate items and toys to occupy children during their long clinic visits or extended hospital stays. They also send birthday cards and packages for things like start of summer, Halloween, and Valentine's Day. Some of the schools collected items for the boxes, such as cozy socks and fidgets, while others held a denim day or a bake sale to make a monetary donation. while others held a denim day or a bake sale to make a monetary donation. Many of our students also made cards of encouragement for children in the hospitals. And finally, on Monday, January 13th, the district will host an ILA parent university. The event will follow an ed camp format. Parents of students in grades K to six are encouraged to attend three sessions of their choice, each focused on strategies to support their children's literacy development at home. And all sessions will be facilitated by our district teachers. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, our first action this evening will be? Nope? Oh, I'm sorry, the student representative?
He's not here.
All right. So at this point, we would have the student representatives' report. He texted his regrets that he is unable to join us this evening. Now do I move on?
Yep, we move on to the cause.
Okay, now we are moving on to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, bless you, the board shall provide a period for public comment at every meeting of the board. Residents are welcome to speak to up to three minutes in duration. The timing will be kept by our board secretary. We do request that when you step up to the podium, if you could state your full name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to address the board tonight? Hello?
Hello. Good evening, Dom Sclafani to Morgan Police. I would first like to congratulate the winners of the election, Dr. Pan, Dr. Figaroa, Dr. Falco, and Dr. Braun, as well as the new board president, vice president, Ms. Gwos and Mr. Hong. I have no doubt you will bring positive change to the board. I wish you all the best of luck. Next, I just want to say, this is what happens when you don't listen to your constituents. An entire community came to support Dr. Figaroa. Petition went out. That came back with overwhelming support from the community members, former students, current staff, the list goes on. Yet you still chose to ignore your constituents. I want to thank the community and the voters for helping to create change. Oh, and thanks for giving me something to do on Thursday nights. This has been one hell of a journey. I met some great people and made some new friends. Finally, to the teachers and staff who are afraid to speak up, I hope you can finally take a sigh of relief knowing that change is coming. Thank you. Hope you had a Happy New Year and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Michelle Bethy, 5 Watchon Road.
Your last name again?
Bethy.
Thank you.
I'm a very proud and involved parent of two fourth grade boys. I'm here to tell you about my concerns with the language arts curriculum and materials. Our journey began in kindergarten. While working with my children to write their stories, I was instructed by their teacher not to sound out the words because according to her, they weren't there yet. While my concerns continued to grow, I asked the teacher to add them to her intervention schedule and that request was initially denied. The intervention that ended up taking place was only about five to 10 minutes per child, very ineffective. Fast forward to first grade, the reading specialist used reading recovery and expected both my children to memorize sight words, which is not research-based intervention. They so desperately needed explicit instruction. In second and third grade, they finally received a teacher who understands how to properly teach them how to read and write. Currently, they are receiving the same type of support, but here are my concerns. One, the resource setting continues to use leveled literacy intervention, which has been proven to be ineffective for struggling readers. Two, there's no access to grade-level text, only leveled text according to the Fontis and Pennell running records. Three, during this time, struggling readers are left to read on their own for 20 to 30 minutes while the teacher is meeting with small groups. Three, a universal dyslexia screener was never administered K to two, which would have flagged them right from the start. Four, special education teachers are not Orton-Gillingham certified, which means most are following the IMSC manual, which means there's no individualized instruction. Sometimes a teacher moves at a slow pace, which continues to widen the gap due to a lack of exposure. This has led to low self-esteem, which I've worked very hard to build at home. A student actually made fun of one of my sons who had a struggle in reading in science class. Very, very disgusting. As a parent, I'm upset that the district does not properly identify struggling readers, does not provide research-based interventions to help get them where they need to be. The gap continues to widen with the lack of training and lack of evidence-based interventions.
Thank you, Michelle. Do you want to leave your information with the ladies back there?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else?
Yes.
Allegra Seidler, 12 South Woodland Avenue. You just heard a firsthand account from a parent of children whose academic success has been stifled by East Brunswick's literacy curriculum. There are many similarities to the stories I previously presented during the last two meetings. These are parents of children in different grades, they're parents of children in different schools, and they've all had different teachers. This is not an individual issue. These are not problems relegated to only these students. These are not problems caused by a teacher. These are problems built into the flawed methodology of this curriculum. One driving force behind the national and international removal of these curricula is their poor ability to promote the appropriate and timely identification of struggling readers. You have heard stories from parents who have been pursuing help for literacy problems through the district, help that the district either denied a need existed for, were not deemed severe enough to require assistance, and/or were given inadequate assistance. What good does it do to say we have tutoring programs when the issues requiring tutoring go unrecognized due to the standards set forth within the curriculum and the district policy? What would these students' outcomes be if their guardians did not defy or push back on the district's recommendations? Parents should not need a background in education to ensure their child's success. It should also be noted that it is much easier to point out curricular deficiencies resulting in below-grade level performance than it is to show the hindrance of a well- or high-performing child's optimal achievement. That is where a well-designed and implemented gifted and talented program could come into play, specifically for K through four, which is another issue I just do not have the time to address today. While I'm here to draw on Michelle's point, I did want to add that, yes, the district provided some educators limited Orton-Gillingham training. There is a distinct difference between the received training and certification. I am unaware as to how many educators have pursued certification on their own. My point is that saying Orton-Gillingham trained sounds a lot better than it is. Similarly, saying we use foundations sounds good, but it's not actually taught with fidelity. These are adjuncts to address the innate deficiencies of units of study and Fontis and Pennell, and they are not even being implemented in a manner that could potentially optimize success. Our kids deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Allegra. All right, is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion, which leads us to, under facilities, can I have a motion for facilities item one?
Motion.
Ms. Herrick? Second, Ms. Falco? Dr. Falco, sorry? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Under student services? Oh, I'm sorry. Under human resources, can I have a motion for human resources? Just item one, right?
Just item one, yeah.
Just item one?
Motion.
Don't move.
Mrs. Herrick and Ms. Lax. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry, this is a roll call vote. I apologize.
Anna Braun?
Aye.
Tim Cummings?
Yes.
Jamie Falco?
Yes.
Lucy Figaroa? Lori Herrick?
Yes.
Lee Wu-Hong?
Yes.
Lori Lax?
Yes.
Wolver Pan?
Yes.
And Heather Gwos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. All right, I apologize for missing on. Under student services, am I in the right place? Excellent. This is so much easier when you're not sitting here. Can I have a motion for student services items one through four?
Don't move.
Ms. Lax and Ms. Herrick? Any discussion? I believe this is a roll call vote.
Sorry, sorry.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I have a question on item number three. Is this person the only speech-language provider for the district or other?
No.
It's just for my.
This is for compliance, to make sure that we're compliant. So this is additional resource.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, this is a roll call vote?
Yes. Anna Braun?
Yes.
Tim Cummings?
Yes.
Jamie Falco?
Yes.
Lucy Figaroa?
Yes.
Lori Herrick?
Yes.
Lee Wu-Hong?
Yes.
Lori Lax?
Yes.
Wolver Pan?
Yes.
And Heather Gwos?
Yes. Motion carries. Bringing us to, happy things, committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. All right, to start with, for the board members, we will be distributing, I will be distributing a list of potential committees to find out what you are interested in before we begin to form up the committees. So an interest survey? Yes? All right. Also leaning, I would like to start for the good of the cause for the board. I would just like to welcome all of our new and familiar faces. I don't think anybody actually feels that new at this point. But I am really looking forward to us all working together. I think that there is a vast knowledge base that has been collected up here, which can only work for the good of our community and the students. And I'm just really excited about the upcoming year. So welcome. Anyone else? Mr. Hong?
So again, if too many, I want to say Happy New Year. And second, I want to welcome four new doctors to this board. You know, it's amazing that this board, how many doctors? Four, five, five, four, six, it's a lot. So which is a base for us to provide good education to our school district. And I just want to share my own experience. Getting elected is just give you the privilege to serve our students. There's many way to improve. I took more than 100 credits from NJ SBA or other educational institute. So that's why, not just help me get my certified board member, master board member, but it did give me all kind of knowledge, helped me to understand how the school district is running and how to cast your own vote. So I hope you guys, you know, take all opportunities to learn, to improve yourself. To be very honest, I don't want to be the board vice president. If you guys can prove you can lead, you're a good board member, I can switch seat with you. Okay, that's easy, that's no issue. And I want, being a vice president, I feel tremendous honor and tremendous pressure. You know, this school district, we need to do a lot for the, for our students, for the township. You know, I always support the ideas that we work with the township because we're only one East Brunswick. We need to work together. And I want people keep having the ideas that they move to East Brunswick simply for the good education, nothing else. This depends on our group effort. Nine of us, we need to work together, you know, at least before next election. We need to work very hard. We need to devote our time, which we choose to do so. So let's work together, push the school district forward, increase our academic performance, which is most parents are looking for. Help the school district dealing with the budget problem. Help the school, the entire community for the high school issues. We need to work together. We need to work with our community members. We need to work with the township. That's why I feel so much pressure. You know, I will work very hard, extremely hard to do my own part, but I hope eight of you guys will work together, please, to help our students. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sarah? Thank you. I'd also like to welcome the new board members. Look forward to working with all of you. I'm going to take a second to touch on school funding reform to let everybody know that the New Jersey Department of Education will hold public hearings on January 8th, 14th, and January 16th. You must register to speak. If you are not able to attend, you can submit written comments by January 17th. If you go to the New Jersey Department of Education homepage, sure you can find a lot of information about the different locations that are situated throughout the state for those hearings. And since it is a public hearing, I will be speaking as a parent, community member, while also acknowledging that while I serve on the board, I don't speak for the board since I'm not in a leadership role. But issues that I will touch on may include ensuring that every student receives the funding necessary to meet the costs of providing a thorough and efficient education, stabilizing the funding process to allow districts to plan effectively, allowing for cap and reductions by limiting the amount that state aid could fall each year, a comprehensive review of the local fair share calculation, which determines the amount of revenues that should be contributed locally, increase transparency of the formula and its calculations so that it can be viewed by administration and the community in a user-friendly manner, increase in predictability as we try to balance and finalize our budget in the tight state timeline provided, and an increase in state funding for extraordinary special education aid. If you need more information or you're not clear as to how you can go about speaking, please feel free to reach out. I know probably Dr. Valeski has the information. I'd also like to let everybody know that the Special Education Parent Advisory Group will hold its next meeting virtually on January 13th. And the topic will be on understanding preform care and New Jersey children's system of care. And to kind of circle back to where I was sitting a year ago, one of my first meetings, there were some young ladies who came and talked about the creation of a varsity dance team. And throughout this past year, those young ladies have worked very hard with district administration and the athletic director to make that become a reality. And I'm proud to say that although I missed it, I was sent a video, but they performed for the first time tonight as a varsity dance team at the varsity basketball game at the high school. So it was really great to see it come fully to fruition. So congratulations to them. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
That's awesome. Thank you. I want to welcome, just as everybody else did, our newest board members. It's really exciting. And to President Gwos's point, there's a lot of expertise at this table and that's really important and invigorating at the same time. And I think beyond that, there's a tremendous amount of commitment and desire to see the community thrive amongst everyone up here. So that's really wonderful. And welcome to leadership. I'm really excited for both of you to serve in these roles and to help guide us forward. So I congratulate both of you and welcome you into that role and look forward to working collaboratively with you towards our collective goals. That's really great. I want to do a quick kind of just thank you to the people who come to these meetings and come and speak. You know, that's really important for us to hear what's going on and to touch base. You know, and it takes some courage to a certain extent, too. It can't be easy to get up there at the microphone. So, you know, I just think it means a lot. I know personally to me and I think for other people to hear from you, to hear from you. Always love hearing, you know, the great things that are going on here, too, because this is a tremendous community, as everybody has shared. And there are a lot of wonderful things that are happening on a daily basis here. And just really thank the people who come and share that voice and those who share the concerns that are happening as well because we do, you know, there's always room to improve for human. And, you know, we acknowledge that and look forward to working, to Mr. Hung's point, as a community towards the betterment of the greater whole. So, thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay.
Anyone else?